All right, I want to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of Murfreesboro Community Unit District 186 and Mrs. Heinz, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Beavers?
Here.
Dr. Dorr, Mr. Green?
Here.
Mrs. James?
Here.
Mrs. Ewaldy?
Here.
Mr. Rungy?
Here. And before we do the pledge of allegiance, I want to welcome our newest principal for her first meeting, and would you be so kind as to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Pinky. Okay, next item is the approval of the agenda. Mr. Grody, are there any changes?
Just liked it to be aware that in closed session, we're going to discuss the placement of specific students in advanced courses and other matters related to specific students. So that's just being at the closed session discussion.
Next item is the approval of the consent agenda, which contains District 186 Regular Board Meeting Minutes dated July the 16th, 2019, tri-county bills for August 2019, applications and reports, and I will entertain a motion for that consent approval.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the approval of District 186 Bills for August of 2019. Are there any questions from the board?
Didn't feel like there were any after the long June schedule. People were kind of like...
So, I just have a question on the general activity report. I don't have that in my place. Oh, it's the PTO line. Are we seeing any movement with that $16,000 sitting in there?
I can't answer that. I'm not involved in that.
That's not part of the bill.
No, I didn't know where that belonged.
That's in the consent agenda. Probably need to check if the building level with that.
Okay.
I'll follow up on that one.
Thank you.
Sorry.
I have a question. Let's see, page, oh, pages, 86, the thicker packet. The kids' account, is that going to be $9,600 every year for the, or is that something new?
Yes, that's how much it's going to be every year.
Right, that's correct. Steve. That's my understanding that's made a big difference in, Mr. Todd, big difference in pickup for, on the kids' account? The kids' account, that software, that's made a big difference in your elementary buildings?
Yes. And then if we had an emergency, we can account for where our kids are within a minute. If we have to dismiss outside the building, if there's ever a tragedy or weather, and we have to dismiss it from the high school, any one of my staff members can dismiss any one of the students to verified parents. All they gotta do is have their card, scan it, they'll bring up a list of approved parents that are, can pick them up, and then they can dismiss them and take notes. It's a huge, huge...
I thought it seemed like a lot every year, too. But with the, with the, all the safety components, I know it was a lot last year, but I didn't, I didn't remember it was going to be that much every year.
And just touch on that real quick, I know it's not part of the bills. What's protocol, say a parent gets order protection placed on them, and they try, three hours later, pick up their kid. At what point does the school get notified of that order protection?
So typically, whenever an order protection is put in, one of the parents is going to have to bring it to us. The police department is going to notify us with that. But when the parent brings it in, we put it in our system like them. So if a parent tries to pick up a student that they weren't verified to pick up, it'll come up on our screen and then we can register to the office. We now have a panic button we can hit, and I believe Steve, if it's right, it'll automatically go to the police department. And so if that parent shows up, we can discreetly get that panic button on the screen. The police department's on their way. You say, here, pull over to the side, you know, if they're inside, we'll have to go in and get them. They're hung up, hold on a minute, or, you know, you're not allowed to pick this through your mouth.
Procedurally, though, that is the biggest concern, is that as soon as someone leaves a courthouse with an order of protection, it's a race to the school as to who's going to get there first, as far as that's concerned, so.
Any other questions from the board on the bills?
Yeah, I had another question. Looks like there was a replacement of chairs and furniture. That's great. Is that on a schedule, or is that where?
Some of the furniture at the general is getting to be 20 years old, so there were, you know, cracked seats in some of those. We tried to, you know, last year, Crowther's had some seating, this year we also did some at the middle school, in conjunction with the asbestos abatement, so the science lab. So, you know, we do kind of rotate, and, well, I did spend more at Crowther's last year. High school really didn't have any high needs in classrooms, with the exception of some extra cafeteria chairs, so.
And the chorus room?
Chorus room, yeah. But that was part of the addition as well of the project.
Anyone else? All right, then I will entertain a motion to approve the District 186 Bills for August.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Heinz?
Mrs. Ewaldy?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Dr. Dorr?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes, motion carries. Communications, do we have some?
We do.
Dear Mrs. Pinky, please accept this letter as my notice of resignation from my position as a special education resource aide at General John A. Logan, effective July 26, 2019. I have decided to accept a job at Perry School in Carbondale. I sincerely apologize that I was not able to provide you with a more advanced notice of my resignation. It was only yesterday that the job was formally secured. I have truly loved working with the children of Murfreesboro over the past four years, and I will greatly miss them, as well as many of my coworkers. I am grateful to have had the opportunity and experience of working at both Crowther's and General John A. Logan. I wish both the students and employees of all the very best during the 2019-20 school year and beyond. If you or anyone else ever has any questions or concerns during the upcoming school year that you think I may be able to assist with, please feel free to contact me. Sincerely, Kristen Bick.
The recommendation is to approve her resignation.
I'll entertain a motion to accept that recommendation. So move. Good, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
To whom it may concern, I will not be returning to General John A. Logan for the school year of 2019-2020. I have accepted another position at Tri-County. Thank you, Shenazmari.
Recommendation is to approve Mrs. Pinky's resignation as well?
And I'll entertain a motion to accept that recommendation.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Dear Mrs. Pinky, Mr. Grody, and the Murfreesboro Board of Education, it is with great excitement and a wisp of melancholy that I must tender my resignation effective immediately, as I have accepted another position. I would sincerely like to thank everyone I have had the privilege of working with for allowing me the freedom to teach in my own quirky way, to learn from the people in this district, and to grow as a parent educator. I will miss this district and its people, but the time has come and the perfect situation for me has fallen in my lap. With my held head high, a lump in my throat, a small tear in my eye, I bid a fond farewell to Murfreesboro District 186. Thank you for everything, Susan M. Probst.
The recommendation is to approve Mrs. Probst's resignation.
She's been here a while.
She has.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to accept that. So move. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'd like to, but motion carries. Push away. Is that it?
Nope. Dear Mr. Marston, please accept this letter that I will be resigning from the seventh-grade assistant volleyball coaching position for the upcoming 2019-2020 season. Thank you for the support and the opportunity to coach volleyball over the course of the last season. If I can do anything to help with the transition and to make things smoother for the incoming coach, feel free to contact me, and I will be more than willing to help out and do whatever it takes to make sure that the transition goes as smooth as possible. Sincerely, Amy Raphael.
The recommendation is to accept Ms. Raphael's resignation.
I'll entertain a motion to accept that recommendation. So move. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We want to wish all four of them the best.
One more.
Oh?
We have one left.
Sorry.
Dear Board of Education, in January of 2019, I was selected as a Robert Noyce Teacher Fellow. As a part of the teaching fellowship, I will be attending classes at Southern Illinois University in Carbondale. These classes will primarily be focused on science teaching, but I will also be taking classes within the curriculum and instruction department. I completed a course in May 2019 and am currently enrolled in an action research course through the curriculum and instruction department. I am requesting permission to continue my education beyond my current degree and to have those hours added to my pay schedule when I have completed the required number. Please let me know if you have any questions or concern, and thank you for your consideration in the matter. Yours truly, Matisha Green, Special Education.
The recommendation is to approve her hours.
And I'll entertain a motion to accept that. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That's it? I do have one item that I need to communicate. I received an email from Jim Helton on our executive search that contained a link for people to go on and take the survey. I forwarded that to the board and to staff today, and then asked the principals to forward that to their, their parents. So, that's been done. I'm assuming everybody here in the board got that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You've got till, I believe, the 15th of September to take that, so I want to appreciate it.
And if...
Anybody in the community wants that, please forward that on to them as well, okay?
I'll be posting that on Facebook tomorrow.
Yeah, thank you for doing that. That's it. Next item, fishbowl. We've got the fishbowl here. Do you have one?
We've got two.
Two? Have one?
Stacy Teft has been accepted to present at the National Council for Social Studies Annual Conference in November in Austin, Texas. The presentation is titled "Virtual Classrooms: Corroborating AR, VR, and GIS with Primary Sources." This has been a result of collaboration between Ms. Teft and the SIUC curriculum and instruction and anthropology departments. The augmented reality and virtual reality materials that have been developed will be piloted in Ms. Teft's classroom this fall.
She's doing some really neat things, bringing STEM into the social studies curriculum.
Good.
One, dear Julie Whitneyborn-Sikorsky, thank you for participating in the 2019 Noyce Summit, the role of teacher preparation and STEM teacher retention in high-need school districts, held July 10th through the 12th at the Hyatt Regency Capitol Hill in Washington, DC. The summit was co-hosted by the American Association for the Advancement of Science STEM Education Program and the National Science Foundation Division of Undergraduate Education. Of the approximately 620 STEM education professionals in attendance, nearly 180 were pre-service, early-career, and master teachers, supported by NSF's Robert Noyce Teacher Scholarship Program. Your participation in the summit had a significant positive impact on those present, and we want to thank you for your continued commitment and support.
Julie was here yesterday, and commensurate with her request, there is a, that's the poster that was at their presentation in Washington, DC, and you'll see that Tri- County School District and Murfreesboro School District are well represented in that, so.
Good.
She asked that I pointed out, but she hung it up for y'all to see.
Good.
It's another great partnership with SIU.
Good. That's it? Push on, fishbowl. Next item is a Freedom of Information Act request.
We've had two. The Murfreesboro Education Association requested itemized attorney bills from Tukey, Cooper, Mohan, Jackstat that pertain to negotiation matters for the June 2019. And we sent it on June 27th. Information was given in a timely manner there. Dave Murray from Samron also requested a copy of the fully executed contract and all change orders for the Murfreesboro High School Athletic Field and the middle school HVAC projects, and information was provided there in a timely manner as well.
Very good. Next item is the recognition of the audience. The Board of Education welcomes the audience to make public or employee comments. The Board has set aside time in the agenda specifically for this purpose. Pursuant to Board Policy 2.230, each speaker shall be limited to a five-minute presentation. Please be aware that while this is the time for the public to express its opinions and/or concerns, the Board may or may not comment regarding public presentations. If a matter of public comment warrants discussion or action of the Board of Education, such discussion or action will be added to the agenda of a future meeting. Are there any public concerns or comments? Are there any employee concerns or comments? Thanks for coming out, folks. All right, let's move into old business. The first item is a financial update. Mr. Grody, this is informational.
Tax bills have been received by the populace. They did go down. I want to point out, I got no phone calls regarding that, but depending on your, your house, you went from $40 to $70 down, and that's due to the abatements that we've done. I'd like to just point out with all the building upgrades that we're doing, the 1% sales taxes doing exactly what we want to do, improve the community while trying to lower those taxes. Our evidence-based funding is finalized. We had originally estimated, two years ago, we had $800,000. Last year, we had $600,000, so we were thinking $400,000. Couple of months ago, I said we were expecting the same as last year, that was what the governor had said, and so we were looking back at the $600,000. Final, we came in a little under the $600,000, so we will be receiving a $532,224.84 addition to our, our state funding. We also were notified this week that the FY '19, that's last school year's, fourth-quarter categoricals were released. And so for this year, we are expecting to get one categorical from last year and three categoricals from this year, so we're hoping for four categoricals. You try and get four in a year, so that's good news there. And then finally, next month, I believe Jan is going to have the IMRF review for five and five.
That's true.
We had, we had done the retirements, and we had talked about whether or not that was cost-effective and whatnot, and we're going to finally get down to looking at those salaries, and who left, who we replaced them with, and how that worked out for us.
We just finished those replacements, since we had someone go basically the very last day, just have had the replacement hired, so.
So next month, we'll be able to see how that worked out for us, so that we got, what, five years until we can do the five and five again, or?
We'll pay for it. We start paying in January 20, and so we can pay for it for five years, and then wouldn't be eligible to do it again until that's paid for.
All right. Questions, concerns, comments regarding the finances?
Okay, item number two is the construction update, which is enclosure number one, and this also is informational?
Yeah, and so let me, let me say that this is, we typically don't do a construction update at the end of the summer. This is the first time in my recollection we've had a project that has not met the deadlines that we've set. I think that's fair to say. There's two projects, the middle school and the high school, so I'd like to talk just about one at a time. I'm going to focus in on the middle school. They are substantially complete, we're down to just little tiny punch list items. It was extremely tight. They were hanging the final whiteboards on August 13th. Kids were coming August 14th. I walked Mrs. Graff around on August 12th, that's Monday, getting final occupancies and whatnot. We've not received a financial, a substantial completion pay request from them, but right now, I would say that they were substantially completed on August 13th. The, the expectation date for completion is August 1st. But everything's in, and we did, were able to have school. Yes, sir.
Looking through that packet, one thing that was concerning, so, so the work order change one, it has, the first copy is signed by Jim Seifert and yourself, and it shows, this is for the cut and cap gas and, you know, some small things or anything major, but on that, it says the day, the, there's a contract days added, and then the actual final completion day, August 1st. On that first page, it shows that, and you guys signed that. Go to the second page, and that's the one that the project manager and the project manager signed. They changed it to TBD and TBD. So to me, and we get to the high school, there's a whole lot of them, you go to the third page, which is change order number two, it's the same thing. We've handwritten TBD marked out August 1st, but not all parties had initial this.
Yeah. That is something that we are going to, it's never been an issue before. Change orders have always been, it's never been an issue before. I completely understand the questions that you're asking, and that's going to be secured and done in the next summer. Nothing will be agreed upon until it is signed off by all three people, which is the way it's supposed to be done. When you're looking at projects, a lot of times you do it by phone call, or, yeah, I'll sign that, and you just, you kind of go by that to get things done, and it's always worked that way in the past, and in this case...
The one you signed is the one that has the final completion date is August 1st.
But they didn't sign it.
They didn't sign it.
They didn't sign it, but then they changed the one that you signed and sent it back.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, question for y'all, on change order two, though, your signature's on that, and there's handwritten, so is the handwritten after you signed or before you signed? Do you remember?
I honestly don't.
Well then, okay, then what's the next page right behind that?
That.
That says...
That's the breakdown.
Yes, the breakdown, but then at the bottom, there's a note that said it adds seven days to the contract time.
And so all, to me, all, a lot of, so this is Everard's type-up, it doesn't have AMWs on there, but you go through every work order change, all of them will have this note down here that says, hey, we're going to add seven days, even though the work order change doesn't add seven days. And to me, it seems like if I'm worried about liquidated damages or completion date or something, I'm going to try to muddy the waters as much as possible and give myself legs to stand on if I can't complete the project on time.
I have no response to that?
I get that, and I wish Jim was able to hear that.
And, yeah.
I understand why he's not.
So that everybody's aware, Mr. Seifert is at the hospital. His father had a procedure today. His father is doing well. He had a double bypass, but, yeah, that's why he's not, that's why he's not here. Yeah, the, the only thing I can say is, is that we've never had issues in the past, but we've always had construction done by the time we wanted it done by.
I kind of...
This has been, this has been a, a different summer.
Didn't you, as I recall, you called and checked on some of their previous projects? And wasn't that the feedback that you got? Was that...
And that's where, unfortunately, we had to kind of, and I talked to Jim about it, I talked with individuals on the Blueford School Board, Mount Vernon School Board, Marion School Board, Marion City Council, because those are the ones, when you go on Everard's website, those are the projects, recent projects, and every one of them said, you're going to get work ordered to death, he's not going to meet the timeline, and he's going to be able to muddy the waters enough to where you can't hold him accountable for the timeline. And so I took that, and I took it back to Jim and Mr. Grody, and both of them agreed. I hear, I hear you out, unfortunately, to have legs to stand on, to turn down lowest bid, you have to have, we as a district have to have an issue with that.
I will say, I don't feel like we've had excessive change orders regarding, I mean, this, you mean, you're dealing with a 100-year-old building, you're going to get a lot of change orders, so for that, that one issue out of the three that you named, I don't feel like we're there.
And I think we had a change order, I mean, we had a pretty big one on the auditorium with the grade with the concrete, too.
Every job's going to have change orders.
Not that I'm sticking up for Everard, but we're going to have them.
No, I agree.
But the flooding of the...
That wasn't Everard, though. That was...
No, but I'm saying, there's a different contractor, so, I mean, it happens.
You could change orders with every, with every job, and especially with the middle school.
And the only project they had done for us, they completed on time, so as far as kicking them out, they're the low bid. We couldn't, we didn't have any, we didn't have any...
Even, I mean, out at the water plant, at the Kincaid Conservancy, they didn't complete that job, they got kicked off, their bond called on, and they, somebody else finished that project, so.
Can't speak to those facts, but I can tell you that we didn't complete this job on time, and...
Touche.
But we are in school, and we're down to the, the final punch lists. High school, August 30th, we are expecting to play the game at our field. We, Rick, Kevin, Mr. Seifert, and I met with Matt and Rodney Everard to discuss an asphalt issue. There was a, regarding the new construction, with every construction project, you need to have a demarcation point. There needs to be some place that you stop the project. You know, you can't make everything beautiful and perfect, and, you know, it's like the middle, the, the high school auditorium, everybody talked about how beautiful it is, and if we could have just gotten this into the hallways of the commons area. You've got to stop a project somewhere. The demarcation point at the high school field, when you walk in and everybody marches in, and you've got that big gate that goes right onto the field, that was a demarcation point. We, because of the slope of the, the track around it and whatnot, there was more asphalt built up than we were expecting, which caused a, a, a longer slope necessary. Anyway, they are fixing that problem, they are bringing in a load of asphalt to feather out the sides, to fix what they called the ADA issue of making sure that transition was smooth. The walkway that goes, as you're thinking, you know, if you're a visitor at the bleachers and you're walking the sidewalk around, you're going to be going over this new ramp that gets into the thing to go get concessions and go to the bathroom, and then you're going to have to go over that again. And so to fix that ADA issue that was created, they're going to bring in asphalt and fix that on their own dime. The rain, it did rain a lot. I know there were questions and concerns about the lime stabilization, to which they did. Right now, the field should be done Friday or Monday. The game plan is, is the press box is done, the sound got fixed today, it sounds, from what I've heard, great. The field will be done by next week, and then the asphalt, the track company's going to come in for the final, final part of the job, and they're going to possibly lay the first coat around, depending on weather, and then we'll have the game, they'll come back after the game, put down the second coat, and paint it. So they're going to work around our schedules to make sure we have the game there on Friday. Questions, concerns, comments regarding that one?
Is there anything that can hold up that game for Friday, and we not have it?
If it rains every day from here on out, so they can't get that field done, that would be problematic.
What's the game plan if we don't have the game there on Friday?
Right now, we're not thinking that way. Come mid-next week, I might be starting to develop a plan. Right now, it would be, we would first call SIU and see if they're still available. If they're not, we would probably be playing in Carbondale. I did say to the Everards, when we were at that meeting talking about the asphalt, and there were some, some honest comments shared, I explained to them, I said, you realize, we're going to have this discussion right now as to whether or not we're having this game at SIU or here. The worst thing that can happen to any of us is not have the game on Friday. And, and, you know, if you tell me you can't do it, that's one thing, go to SIU. If you say we can do it, then we need to get it done. He said, we, we can get it done, it's no problem, and so...
In essence, all that's got to be done now is everything sewn in, correct?
It looks like they have it locked.
For the field.
From when we were there yesterday.
For the field, so it's playable.
Oh, for, yeah.
Yeah.
The Red Devils is being glued into the end zone.
Currently.
Currently. They've got both end zones cut out and placed, they just have to cut out the green, or cut out the red, put the yellow lettering in. I think they glued in the head to the center today, they're looking at some of the numbers down the sidelines still right now. The, the guy that's running that part, the contractor that's running the turf part, said he'll be pulling out Tuesday. So, I mean, we have Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, if there's rain, to still, we've got about three days of...
Well, they kind of said, told me that they could work in the rain, provide it's Well, they kind of said, told me that they could work in the rain, provide it's not a downpour or a thing like that, they could still work in the rain.
I just don't know if the glue holds.
They can cut, they don't say they probably can't glue, but they can at least get it cut out right.
But they also said that the drainage drains so quickly on the field that once it stops, they can start again real quick, so. I'm really not thinking that that's gonna be an issue. The question is, will we have just the asphalt as it is on the track? Will we have one coat down, or will we have, we won't have two coats down, that's just not gonna happen.
If you haven't seen it, it's pretty impressive. It's, it is impressive, so.
It is nice, and before Annette can say it, you know, it's kind of like the auditorium, where when you look at it, you say, wow, that's beautiful, and then you look at the comments area, and you think, oh. You know, the bathrooms and the concessions areas need to be. See, I got it before you, right?
Yeah, you did. I didn't last one. What about the? About the press box, why were there some, was that different than what we thought it was going to be? There were two change orders for the press box.
They added partitions.
The partitions were, are between the seating areas.
It was laying, asked for that.
Is it necess, I mean, was it? And then there were outlets, I mean, yeah.
I would think, yeah.
I think one of the reasons is it separates the radio, so you don't have.
Feedback.
The sound of everything.
Talking. You don't hear Brendan talk.
Interference, you don't hear the interference video.
And there's windows in those, so that you don't have to, a lot of the press boxes, they don't have windows in the side walls, and so you, you miss some of the game and things going on. But for radio and for the reporters, I think it was a necessary change.
And just going through there, I know, this is mostly just because I've gone through here and, you know, for the rest of the board to kind of look at. So on work order three for the football field, the work order is to extend the existing pole runway by ten feet, so essentially on a five-foot wide strip of concrete, we're going ten foot longer, we agreed for a seven-day extension to four, ten more feet of concrete, which seems kind of absurd.
That's actually a ten-foot by ten-foot pit.
So it has to go down?
This says runway.
There's now a pit on each end.
Right, but this is running it from a hundred and five to a hundred and fifteen by five foot. The landing area was still twenty-nine by twenty-four, but this was extended, and this is before it was poured, too.
Because I asked the same question when I was out there, why do we have a pit at each end?
I can speak to the.
Go ahead.
The, as far as the number of days that changed on that one, talking a little bit with Jim about it, it wasn't so much that that job, that piece of it needed those days, but when you look at all of the different stuff, and you add up the rain and all that other stuff, he felt like giving them the seven days was fair.
Why do we have a pit at each end?
Where the chicken running the way, depending on the.
Is it normal?
I mean, our last track and field complex had three pits. We now have two. So we went down the amount of pits that we had. We had a pit that went from, you jumped towards the east on the south end of the field. You had a pit that jumped to the south towards the school on the east side of the field, and then you had a pit that jumped to the north on the east side of the field. We had a runway that ran the entire length of the football field at that point, and we had a runway on the south end as well. So we had three pits back then. I mean, obviously, if.
But that type, those three could be used separately, correct?
Correct.
At the same time?
Correct.
This one, you can't use at the same time.
They can, you have two runways on it. There's a runway going, you could, we can essentially run the long jump on one runway and the triple jump on the other runway right now. There's gonna be two runways on that area.
The question Mr. Rungy, I think, is asking, because he and I were having this discussion, and he asked me if I would want to be running this way with someone else running this way, and I said, I wouldn't want to be running.
They would alternate the same time. I mean, it happens, it happens all the time in track.
Okay, I've never, I.
And, and, and if we were to host, if we're to host a sectional track meet ever, you need to have runways that are going with the wind. Because, I mean, say, say to qualify for state, you have to, in the long jump, you have to jump twenty-one six inches.
Where's the second runway?
They're both on that same spot.
Because it's, it's like four feet wide, right?
No, it's like eight foot wide.
Okay.
There's gonna be two runways on that. That's why the sandbox is so wide as well. But say qualifying is twenty-one six, and you're jumping into the wind, you've just given those fifteen schools that are at that sectional track meet a huge disadvantage jumping into that wind that way, to where at least right now, we have an east or a west approach.
What do we do if the wind's out of the north or the south?
Usually it's, at least it's a crosswind and not in your face.
So on the, just, so the seven days on that ten-foot was kind of throwing him a bone?
I think, I think it was, looking at the whole big project and saying seven days would be somewhat reasonable, which is, brought it to the seventeenth, which was last week Saturday. This week.
No, that seven actually was, brought us from August first to August seventh.
Eight.
Oh, eight, okay.
Or August first, August eighth, and then we added another.
And then the second one for the, seventeenth is the current.
We added, I can't read it too well.
The lines would be.
But when we, the demo, the existing tennis courts, that added another seven days to get us to, I think that was hard to read, but I think it says, that means it says the seventeen. But my biggest concern with all of this, so I've been out there quite a few times, ran into a retired general contractor, an existing general contractor, a guy who works for the county, and all three of them had the exact same thing, and it was a different meeting, I talked to them. So on, I think it was June twenty-fourth, twenty-sixth timeframe, it was a Friday before weekend that we were expecting two to five inches of rain, and they were disking the field, and I'm just a dumb farmer, but I know when you disk dirt right before a big rain, two things happen. One, it soaks up as much water as possible, and two, it stays as wet as long as possible. I asked Jim about it last week, and he said, well, that the plan was, they're gonna disk it up, they're gonna roll it, that way it gets a smooth surface, it'll shed water. I'm fine with that, however, zero percent of that field got rolled after that disked up. The reason why we had to do the lime stabilization is because of the neglect of them disking up the field, put themselves in a position to have to do the lime stabilization, because it just, Jim said, February, it's probably not need, highly unlikely that we'll need lime stabilization. Which leads back into the price of the lime stabilization, where we had, out of the five contractors, two of them were fifty cents a square foot, forty-five grand, and we paid him a hundred and eighteen thousand. So essentially, we paid him eighty thousand dollars more than we paid, would've paid any of the other contractors to do this. And I know, we agreed on, because when we asked the question, hey, we have this contract, why are we even quoting the lime stabilization? Until it comes, until it comes up to be an issue, why are we doing it? It's just part of it, we don't think it's gonna happen. But then I asked Jim, I said, well, if it was part of it, and we knew somebody's gonna do it for forty-five thousand, why did we pay a hundred and eighteen, why didn't we bid that out? The reason why we didn't bid out, one, time, time's an issue, but if time's an issue, then why are we putting TBD on the work order changes, and thus making time no longer an issue anyways?
Well, the time would be a sixty-day deal, because you've gotta go out for bids on that, and you've gotta, you've gotta post it and everything else.
Right.
So that would be an issue.
But then if you took the lime stabilization out, they were still the lowest bid.
No, I'm not talking about that, I'm not talking about that. I'm just saying, it's not needed. If it's not needed, but then you, you know, go out there and disk it up, there's only one reason, I feel like it was an act to.
There you can't prove.
But everybody had it in there, right?
Well.
Yes, sir.
If you don't roll any of it.
Right, I mean, you can't accuse them of that.
I've got two, two responses to that, or two things I'd like to say. The first one is, that the, when we met the other day talking about the asphalt, I said to Rodney that, you know, I feel like I'm being held hostage. And he said, that's not how we want you to feel, and, you know, we had a conversation about the asphalt issue, and I get what you're saying. I'm going to see if there's a follow-up with that, because I will ask Everard, why didn't you roll it? I mean, because it looks like you made it a situation where we needed to add the stabilization, or at least that's the way we're feeling.
That's a perception.
And I'll see what he responds with that.
And then, and then all those, from that order, from change order six, because all the change orders before that, number two's not in our packet, but the rest of the change orders have a date. The change order six has the handwritten TBD, change order seven has a typed TBD, and everybody signed it. Change order eight, I believe, is handwritten as well. So to me, that's, if we didn't, if we signed the document without the TBD on there, and then was that after the fact?
Right.
That's, I mean, it's shady.
Shannon, change order two isn't in there, because we declined that change order, we didn't accept that.
There you go.
The date under TBD did not change, though. I mean, it's still August seventeen.
But if you have a, if you have.
But you can argue it, to his point, you can argue it either way in court.
Yeah. And then the whole, the whole idea of it is, and we, Jim even said, you know, one of the contractors, one of the general contractors added a hundred thousand dollars last second to his bid because he was scared to death of liquidated damages. The only reason why you're scared of liquidated damages is if you can't get it done on time. And so you know, there's probably a chance I might have to pay people work out there overtime, weekends, twenty-four hours a day to get this done, because it's a completion day contract, and so I need to make sure I pad it to where I get it done. This kind of nullifies all that and gives you, you know, if you go till November, we wouldn't have any legs to stand on and say, hey, what's going on here? Blueford just now moving into their high school four years later, kind of thing.
Anyone else? Item three is the Egyptian Area Schools reporting benefit trust health insurance. This is an action item.
Jan's been meeting with a few insurance companies, including the Egyptian Trust, and last night we met with the association, and so she's got information she's passing out, and I'm gonna explain to you the recommendation.
Just a long draw, not a call. Our claims have kind of put us in a situation where we really don't have a lot of options. I spent a lot of time getting information to the trust, so I could turn around and provide that information to other, to other groups to see if they could quote us and to see if we can save any money. Long story short, they really can't. What they came back with were, we can save you money if you go to this high deductible plan, and, you know, another HRA situation, and the trust also has those options. So, you know, we kind of looked at, do we wanna, do we wanna change our entire plan, and everyone has, you know, we just got the Blue Cross cards, March first, and Blue Cross seems to be working well for everyone. Everyone I've talked to is very happy with that. But financially, the other options don't put us in a better situation, so I didn't bring you those, because it's, it's, you know, leaving the trust. Health Alliance was going to help us buy out that, it's six hundred and fifty dollars per person with the trust, to buy out of the trust, to buy our business, but there's no guarantees on what those rates would be moving forward. So in our situation, we looked at, we're on Plan E right now, which has eighty-five, fifteen copay with eleven hundred dollar deductible, eighteen hundred dollars out-of-pocket max. That's the plan that gave, that we have the thirteen and a half percent increase on. So option one, of course, really, an option is, we can stay where we are, incur that cost, which is a two-hundred-and-ninety, almost a two-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand dollar increase with all of our, our employees on the, on our insurance. And, but I looked at, we are paying what we call an excess deductible. So we had a plan that was a six hundred dollar deductible, and we made a change probably five or six years ago to have a cost savings. We went up to the eleven hundred dollar deductible, and we reimbursed the people that, that hit their, their six hundred dollars. We reimbursed them for the next five hundred. So we've been doing that five or six years now, and we're at about, the average is about fifty-one thousand dollars a year that we pay out in those excess deductible payments. So same where we are now, stopping that excess deductible would bring us down to an eleven, eleven-point-one percent increase. So no plan changes, we don't pay that, that's where we are. Option two would be, with the trust also, Plan C is what they call it. So this is an eighty-twenty plan, same deductible as Plan E, eight-point-nine percent increase, so, you know, save us, you know, close to a hundred thousand dollars, ninety-eight thousand dollars from where we currently are. But we're still, of course, have an increase of a hundred and ninety-four thousand. The out-of-pocket max goes to twenty-three hundred. This scenario, and this cost would still be, have us paying that five hundred excess deductible. And I say excess deductible, excess deductible with requirements, asking our employees to fill out a questionnaire to be eligible, and this would happen in twenty-twenty in January, because this is a calendar year deductible. Fill out a questionnaire, just to, you know, talk about, do you have other coverage, so that we're not, you know, having any double-dipping and making sure that we're keeping all those things straight. And then option three would be Plan C, same as option two, only we no longer pay, pay that excess deductible. Brings our increase to six-point-six percent over what we were paying this past year. Lot of information, if you would've seen what I've had thrown at me with the different companies and all the six, eight different plans, Blue Cross, Health Alliance. But since we're with Blue Cross, we really can't get any kind of rate from anyone else with Blue Cross. They won't cross the issue with the trust, they won't bid against themselves, basically. So these, these are our best options at this time, while, while still being fair with our employees. Mr. Grody and I met with the insurance committee yesterday, and really feel that at this point, option two would be kind of a, you know, middle of the, middle of the road, and be a fair.
Procedurally, September first is when we need to know what plan we're gonna have. The deductible question really doesn't need to be answered till January.
Right, because we're still paying out the two thousand and nineteen calendar year deductible excesses right now.
So option two is the safest bet, because you can make that change, have those savings, and then if you need to do the deductible later on, we can still do that.
So that's your recommendation?
We hope not to, yeah.
As far as, like, the cover, the other benefits of the plans, are, are like, there office copays, or do those just fall directly to?
Same.
Okay.
We went through.
But there, there is a copay on just an office.
Doctor visit copay.
Right, so you don't, that doesn't fall to your deductible in the eighty-twenty?
No, doctor visit copay, and twenty-five dollars, thirty dollars for a specialist.
But they could use the seven hundred dollars for that.
Sure.
They get.
Right.
Yeah, the HRA that the board pays for.
Correct.
So those, those, between the two plans, there aren't changes there. All those, doctor visit copays, emergency room, all those things are the same. Drugs, you know, the twelve, I don't even know what they are now, I've looked at so many, but the different levels of the drugs, generic, preferred brand, non-preferred, are the same between the two plans.
Thank you.
So they get the seven hundred dollar card, plus five hundred dollars back on their deductible, so they're getting like thirteen hundred dollars? Twelve.
Right, yeah, so we're, so the seven hundred dollars is part of the contract, our teacher's contract. The five hundred dollars is something that we did when we changed plans to hold the deductible different five years ago, when we had a plan change.
Is that five hundred dollars individual, or is that like per family?
Five hundred, because they're also planning, if someone has spouse, it would be another five hundred, and family, one child. So you typically don't see a lot of that, it's mostly, mostly on the employee, but we do have an occasional spouse.
What percent did you say we pay on the excess deductible?
Um, thirty-eight, thirty-eight percent of our employees, thirty to forty percent, I think, thirty-six to forty percent meet.
Sort of low, not many meet that threshold.
We pay something on their deductible, it may not be the full five hundred dollars, but, you know, some, I paid, I did a calculation today, and one person, there's eight dollars, they, you know, they've eight dollars towards that. So it's all different levels of that.
It's listed.
You said you took this to the MEA?
Yeah, we talked to, what did the insurance?
What did they?
They thought that was, that was a fair.
They said two things, the, the first one was, they totally brought up the seven hundred dollar card paying for the excess copay. And you don't hear many good things about our insurance, but the two members that were there, they actually commented how our insurance is better than what her husband gets, and they get family and whatnot, and just the coverage, our, our insurance is very good that way. And then the other one, her, her husband is actually an independent contractor, and they, they've gone out and shopped independent, individual insurance for him, and they've decided that being on our family plan was their best option. So both of them were now wanting to switch companies, and they wanted to stay with Egyptian, so we had three people at that meeting.
And I've also been on this, this part of the exploratory process with Tri County as well, because they're doing the same thing that we are. So it's not just meetings, it's double meetings, they're kind of in the same boat. They are already on Plan C, that's what they pay for, for their employees, and so they're making no changes, recommending no changes to their board, because they, they basically got the same answers with our, with our high usage. I mean, if, if we start having lower claims, we might be in a better position. But I did get some good news from, from the trust, as we're having many conversations. I had the question about what happens when our claims, when, you know, when we have good years, we're paying, you know, we're paying escalating increases higher than some of the other districts, and we're gonna get to the point where, you know, we're really far apart. And they said they are planning a mechanism, we're trying to figure out what that is. I raised that, that point two different times, when we first started doing the tiered, the tiered increases in the last meeting in May. And so they're, they're working on that. They said, we heard you, we know, you know, I said, we're not there yet, it'll be a while before. We're to, we're to the position where our claims are low enough that we should be asking them to decrease our premiums, but they understand that is something that, that will have to happen.
Any other questions from the board? So a recommendation from administration is option number two, correct?
Yes.
I will entertain a motion to accept that recommendation.
And that's effective September one, as Mr. Grody said.
So we're also voting on this, still paying the five hundred dollar excess at this time?
We, we, we do that until January, anyway.
Okay, so it can be brought back up if needed.
So we would have this discussion again in December or January?
Regarding the excess deductible, we'd stay on the Plan C. Right now, the recommendation would be, it has to be more clear, would be that we continue to do the excess deductible, but I want to be clear that that decision can be changed as far as the excess deductible in December. I don't want it to sound like we. I don't want it to sound like we made this decision now and we're changing that decision. But excess deductible does not need to be decided until January.
All right, just, I'll just, my opinion, I don't know how you change that mid-year to the employees, I don't know how you do that.
Well, for that, it's not mid-year because the deductible's a calendar year.
I understand that, but it's the middle of the school year. That's, that's my opinion. So the recommendation is to accept option number two. And we're currently going to pay the excess five hundred until the end of the year, is the way I'm hearing it?
I'm sorry, miss, I was listening.
Sorry.
Did you, did you ask me a question?
So what I'm hearing is, the recommendation is to accept option number two and continue paying the additional, uh, deductible until the end of the, uh, end of the calendar year.
Correct.
Okay. And I need a rec, I need a, uh, motion to accept that recommendation.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Heinz?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mrs. Zivaldi?
No.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Ravi?
Yes, motion carries. Moving to new business, item number one is the Gear Up presentation.
She is, Susan Phoenix is our newly employed Gear Up. Um, we've had this program, I think now for one year or two years, Mr. Phoenix?
Three.
This is our third.
This is our third year? This is the first year, though, where we've had an actual certified teacher. And we're getting refunded by the Illinois Student Assistance Council, Isaac.
So first of all, um, just let me say thank you for this opportunity to teach at Murfreesboro. I grew up in Murfreesboro and I left this district in ninety-five after working an aid position for a year because all the teachers were young and nobody was leaving. And so it took me a few districts to come back, but I'm thrilled to be back. So I talked to Mr. Keener and, you know, when I found out that I was gonna get a chance to go to San Francisco and learn about this program, I got really excited. And so I went out to San Francisco, ate some great seafood. And I learned a lot of really wonderful things about this program. But I also learned that it's not really created to be taught. And so while the ideas of it are fantastic and while the, you know, the proponents of it are fantastic, I had to marry that with social, emotional learning standards and that type of thing. So that's what's in your folder. I basically just wanted to show you how I'm trying to make this a teaching position and how the kids are gonna be held accountable. The, um, the grant covers free tutoring for our students at the middle school. And, um, so Mr. Keener and I have talked about that. And I have put a contact called into the coordinator for the person that holds the grant to ask a couple of questions about, you know, how do we know that our students will be safe with this program, this online tutoring program? And how do we know that, you know, the teachers are accredited and that type of thing? So I'm working on those answers still. But, um, it is a free tutoring service, online tutoring service, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, seven days a week, of course, um, twenty-four, seven. You know, if the kids have a paper due on Monday morning and they need help on Saturday night, they log into their tutor and it's done. Um, so the blue sheet that's in your packet is, um, it's divided into seventh and eighth grade. And so those are the goals that the Gear Up program has set. So the, the coordinators in Chicago that do this, they want the seventh and the eighth graders to be exposed to those goals. And that's wonderful, but that doesn't lend them to teaching. So what I did is I pulled up the social, emotional learning standards and I paired those goals with the standards. And so I'm developing my curriculum off of that. So the program is really for seventh and eighth graders, but I'm pulling in some sixth graders. And then I'm trying to pull in all of your learning styles. So like your visual learners and your auditory learners and your tangible learners. So right now, my lesson plans are day by day, but it's coming together. There is some vocabulary that was really, really good and promoted out in San Francisco, about resiliency and positivity and hope and those types of things that I think are important to bring home to our students. And to hopefully get them to carry that into all of their academic areas, not just a fun class, if you will. The pink sheet is a rubric, that is how, um, they show accountability, you know? Cause sometimes they do projects. And sometimes I can't give more than maybe two grades a week, but I still have to show accountability and that they are learning and they are working. So you can read there the rubric, um, the areas that they are held accountable on as far as attitude and, you know, timeliness and all of those types of things. So it's a work in progress, but it's a really good program. I'm thrilled to deliver it to the school district. And, um, I'm hoping that the kids gain a lot from it. And then they can push it out into their attitudes that we're working on, push those out into the academic areas. So that's pretty much it. I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to go to San Francisco, learn about this and then bring it home and see what we can get it done.
Just for the record, though, we didn't pay for that trip to San Francisco.
Well, I know, but you allowed me to go.
I know.
No, it's not.
No. I've already gotten some phone calls about that, but I just wanted to make your reminder clear.
So, no, my students don't know that I went to San Francisco, um, you know, that, that was not something we discussed. I, uh, threw a cover letter in with this rubric, I had Mr. Keener read it first and approve it. Just to let the parents know what we will be working on as far as, you know, um, just, you know, the things that all jobs need. They need, um, quality employees, they need people that are, um, consistent with time expectations and work ethics and those types of things. So we're working on study habits, we're working on, you know, other types of good habits that they need to develop as they push into high school and then beyond.
Any questions from the board? We wish you the best of luck with this, I think this is a great program.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Item two is the District 186 tentative fiscal year twenty budget hearing dates, we need to set those.
Um, everybody's got a copy of the budget out there table, correct? And then that's gonna be on display for thirty days. We're recommending a hearing at six fifteen on September twenty-fourth. That is not the third Tuesday, that is the fourth Tuesday. In September, we typically will have our board meetings on the fourth Tuesday because of the thirty-day on-display requirement for the, um, for the budget. So the idea there is to have a, a September twenty-four, six fifteen hearing with a six-thirty regular meeting. And I see Mr. Rungy checking his calendar.
Yes.
I may or may not be.
You should have it in there, cause we switch it, I'll put out the calendar, but I get here.
Any questions?
Will you be able to make it? Mrs. Dorr indicated that she might not be able to make it on the twenty-fourth either. So we'll have to make sure we get a quorum at least or we'll have to change the date, so.
Okay, uh, then I'll entertain a motion to accept the budget hearing date.
So moved.
Mrs. Heinz? All in favor? Sorry. Motion carries. Item number three is fundraising for twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty school year.
And this is the yearly, um, fundraising approvals that we asked the board to do. Um, anybody that has to, is anticipating a profit of a thousand dollars or more, they need to have it approved, board approved. So, uh, you have that as listed and the recommendation is to approve them as?
I'll entertain a motion to accept that recommendation.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number four is approve the salary and compensation report, which is enclosure number two.
Another yearly, um, requirement that once you approve it, we will get it up on the website. Um, the recommendation is to approve it as presented.
Questions from the board?
Didn't see many.
Uh, the contracts are different, the time period though, right? Can you review those again? I mean, some of these are ten and some are eleven, right?
Right, um, high school principal is a twelve-month contract, middle school principal is an eleven-month contract.
Two elementarys are ten months.
One was longer.
Oh, yeah, Mrs. Finke is longer, she's.
Ten and a half or eleven? Eleven?
Eleven.
Eleven as well. Mr. Todd is ten. Aaron Allison is ten, not ten. And so those, except for, um, Mrs. Finke's contract is, is listed for this year, the amount. But everyone else is still, um, part of your contract until we, um, bring your administrative salaries to the board.
And that cost of health insurance is based on option two?
Actually, when we put this together, uh, we didn't have those options. So that was what we had at the time when the board packet went out. That was based on option one.
So that might go down a little bit, it's in the final document, or?
It could.
Would it now?
Or we could just leave it like it is because it's, it says projected, so.
Gotcha.
Um, what, what we know at the time when we prepare the report.
Any other questions? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the report as presented. And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five is the approval to sell trailers, various maintenance equipment and concession trailers.
This is not a yearly requirement. However, we've gotten to the point where it's time for some of our older maintenance equipment and, uh, concession trailers to be put out there for sale. And we're asking your permission. Jane can speak more to the specifics as to what we would like to sell, but.
There are several, um, I think three or four trailers, um, that they're just not using anymore, um, or not in good shape at all. But I think the, the thing that will probably bring the most money and that is usable, um, to some is the concession trailer. And I think that, well, you know, there's been some interest in that, we're not using it. Um, BAN used it at one point, they haven't used it in a number of years. Baseball used it, they used to haul it on their, on all their trips. And it's just a, it was a hassle to do that, they haven't done that in many years. So I did check with Athletics, I checked with the BAN program and no one has an interest in keeping that trailer, so.
Georgia.
In Georgia? Did Georgia, uh, I didn't ask Georgia, I didn't know. She might buy, you need to hush, she might buy.
Georgia's new job, she's cooking. One of those calls.
She had some, she had some good ideas for.
Summer food.
Summer foods.
I didn't hear that.
Just the conversation we had one day.
Oh, okay.
So are we gonna leave that on or you wanna pull it?
I have, I don't know.
I don't know what it looks like, so.
Do we have anything? Did you get rid of the vans? Cause it took a three-quarter ton vehicle to pull that concession trailer. That's what we had issues with. The last year we did it with BAN, we had one van with a bunch of miles, it was an F-350.
Right, and it tore up the transmissions several times.
In the smaller one, the bigger, it takes the bigger vehicle to pull it. So if we don't have a bigger vehicle, you're not gonna be able to pull it.
Right.
All right, let's, let's just leave it as a contingent, we'll leave it on there. Just based upon your two conversations, it might get pulled, how's that? This is closed bids for these.
Seal bids, yes, we'll advertise and then see, see what we can get from them.
Throw a couple bucks on each of them, you know? Just in case somebody doesn't bid on them.
Get lucky. Or unlucky, that's exactly right. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendation to sell the various pieces of equipment. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six?
We have a two thousand eight gray Ford, eight-passenger van and a two thousand nine gold Ford, eight-passenger van that we also believe could be better off sold. So we're asking permission to do sealed bids on those as well.
So before we bid to sell them, should we talk about buying new passenger vans?
Well, that is the next item. And we, we had some discussion as to which one should come first. Because I don't wanna buy new passenger vans unless we sell.
Right.
The old ones, but I also don't wanna sell the old ones until we have permission to buy new ones. So really, either one could've gone first.
Well, they gotta talk about it at the same time.
Can't you, can't you, can you put the two together?
Yeah.
We probably can. We can probably buy those, they're both on the agenda. And both of them, um, the vans are used primarily for, for teacher trips, for professional development. And they've got a lot of miles on them and a lot of age on them. And I'm concerned sending them on some of the trips, you know, St. Louis, Chicago, Bloomington, where they go. Um, and we've had breakdowns and some of the teachers can share with you their fun stories on some of those breakdowns. So, um, for safety purposes, it's just probably a good idea. And then the big boxy eight-passenger that no one really likes to drive, we're not transporting kids, we're not transporting cargo. Um, so asking the board to, um, do advertise and bid for two seven-passenger vans. They're a little bit more driver user-friendly. Um, so my idea would be that we.
To go from the big ones to just a minivan?
Yeah, just a seven-passenger, like, the last one we bought, that, I don't know if you've seen the driver's ed van, um, it's a Honda Odyssey, something along those lines would work really well. And we have the old Honda, if any of you've ever driven in that, it's a, it's ten years old, I know you have.
What's, what's the program? I mean, what, um, I mean, obviously, I've, you know, if we get a good deal on a new one, that's great. But like a thirty thousand mile used one, um, I mean, do we get a good enough deal on new ones?
We do.
Okay.
We, we, the last, the last one we did get a really good deal. Um, and they, and, and we're keeping the Honda that's ten years old because it is still, I mean, it's still in good condition. Um, you know, it's, it's still getting driven.
Get your steps in, Owen, you ride any.
When you say good deal, though, what, how much are we talking? Um, I think last year, uh, gosh, I, I don't have the, um, what we paid for it last year. But I, I know we looked, we looked at it and, you know, we look and what you could go buy one and we got a substantial discount. And we bought it as locally as you can.
Forty thousand?
Oh, no, 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 like twenty, um, it was less than thirty, I know. Okay.
Can we, uh, just go to dealers or do we do?
We advertised, but it, but we've had dealers that bid on those. And sometimes it, it has been, um, we bought the last one from I, I Honda. Um, we've had dealerships that have bid on the, on the eight-passengers. And we were advertising for bids for those from Springfield and, you know, Land, I wanna say Landmark, there's several.
And on like a state bid, like they're an expert?
Yeah, they, they've had the state bid, but we've done that. Uh, you know, it's more common for the eight-passengers, the bigger vans to have the state bid than the, the seven-passengers like we want.
You know, they have mileage on those. Look, they have one right now.
Uh, um, I wanna say a hundred and thirty. Ballpark, maybe a little bit more than that. So my concern on buying two new vehicles is that we're still doing contract negotiations. I mean, we have issues with change orders and we're spending a lot of money that maybe we need to be spending more money, like, right now. And perhaps just wait a month or two until things are completed.
That wouldn't be in the end fund, would it?
No.
It doesn't have anything to do with payroll, it's a different line item.
Wow.
Are these used?
They can bring it up, but it doesn't have anything to do with the.
Are these used for, by, and yet, like you said, just trips? But aren't some of these used to pull trailers for different?
We have one, um, the golden, we've used that. And that's one of the reasons why I want to, you know, it's rough on them, pulling the trailers is rough on them. So one of the things we've talked about is for the trailers that we do pull, um, maybe looking at a used, very gently or even used, um, truck to pull that, a four-wheel-drive something, you could not, you know, nothing brand-new, but, um, to do that rather than the vans, because it, it's rough on the transmissions to pull those trailers.
We have some trucks, and we, we, we have trucks.
We have a, we have a, um, a maintenance truck that's, it's got a lot of years on it, that teal color truck. And then we've got the white one with the, with the plow. Uh, but that's, that's the, the thought is, um, football uses it, I think BAN uses, uh, one of the trailers when they go on, go on trips. So I'm trying to figure what, what would work to pull that, um, without tearing up those vehicles that are getting used every day. Uh, at one point, we were in a cycle where we were replacing on a regular basis. But I don't consider ten, twelve years, um, really an acceptable, uh, cycle of replacement. We, you know, we went through the period where our general state was prorated, so we didn't buy anything. We're just making do with, with what we have. Um, I just do, I have concerns sending people out and, um, the vehicles that have so many miles. And these vehicles were used on, um, ED routes, transporting kids to ward school to show. So we did it one time using for students and so they've got some high miles, it's a kind of rough usage.
Just rough numbers on gas mileage between eight-passenger and the minivan. You're talking about eight hundred dollars a mon, eight hundred dollars a year gas savings. So if it's a ten-year lifespan, eight thousand savings compared to the two. So that would help a little bit on the, the cost itself, maintenance car, yearly cost.
And if we don't have one available, a, a van to drive, then we're paying fifty cents a mile, um, on mileage for the trips. And that, you know, that adds up pretty fast.
So you're really talking about three vehicles though, right? Because you're gonna bring back something, you don't wanna use either of these new to pull.
No.
So you're talking about another vehicle.
Well, we're looking at something inexpensive, that, that the maintenance could also use it on a plow as, you know, but that would be part of the maintenance budget. And, um, if we could find one, we wouldn't necessarily have to bid it because it would be a lower amount. Now, didn't we just buy two new vans? We bought two buses, the white, the white activity buses that transport students.
My thought would be, let's get, let's get the bids, get an idea of what we think we can, you know, what the value, obviously, you put them, you know, close, there's still bid on somebody buying the van. You don't know if it's gonna go for eight thousand or two thousand, but if we have a decent idea of what the vans are worth and we get the sealed bids on what all the different vans, you know, are gonna cost, then we have a better idea of with gas savings, with what we're gonna get back on the vans we're selling, with the cost of the new van. The new van's actually gonna cost us X. And then we have can make that decision versus blindly going out selling.
But you're not asking though to s- to buy and sell. You're just asking to go after bids on both, correct? If you're reading that.
But we're sell, we're approving to sell those vehicles. So you sell those vehicles and you put yourself in a position to have to buy the new.
Well, not if it's a sealed bid. We could always say we we reject all the bids. We have that right.
Well, having that dollar amount ahead of time helps us make that decision.
Well, I I totally agree.
We know what we can get out of those two, you know, two eight passengers before we, at the same time that we're getting the close, the bids for the new ones.
Right, that factors in until we get back from the new ones.
I like that.
Yeah.
And then we can make an educated decision at that point.
Any other questions? So the recommendation is to go out for sealed bids, to sell these two vehicles and also to receive bids on possible purchasing two. The decision then to be made in September on whether or not to move forward.
How far does this information for the the eight passenger get disseminated? Like, it's just on our website, is it?
Yeah, we put it in the paper and our website.
It's probably not a bad idea to put it on the on the website, Facebook and everything else.
I yeah, I mean, to me, I think there's a lot of churches that would look at that and go.
Yep.
Yeah.
Sure.
All over that, but how many of them are, you know, going out and scrubbing school websites of vans?
I think it was the church that bought the one white activity, white activity bus.
From, sorry.
I know, it's not.
Okay, so.
I still have concern about, I mean, like, the people that need those to pull the trailer, like you said, football and that. And we get rid of this, but we don't have that. What are they gonna do? Cause you're not taking a bid out or finding.
We're not. Um, if if we're, I mean, that would be part of our maintenance budget to find some something, cause it's a dual purpose. If we if we do that as a dual purpose, it will will be the use on the snowplow, um, and also for trips.
And not to mention, I mean, like those eight passenger vans, like when BAN and when football takes those, it also has
People.
eight coaches or faculty members in there in them while they're pulling.
Right. They're truly not meant. I mean, the the idea of those is is to transport people on trips. That's why we're buying them and not to pull those vehicles. Um, some of the vans we've had in the past, we've put multiple transmissions in. So trying to avoid that if if possible.
So then we have two vehicles going on the trips, one pulling whatever trailer they need plus.
No, they wouldn't take they wouldn't take the van. I mean, they 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 wouldn't take a van on a on a trip. They have buses for that.
So the coaches would ride with the in the bus with the students and one person would drive the truck pulling the trailers, what you're saying?
Wouldn't it then be better if we're gonna ask for sealed bids, get a bid, cause you don't need to get two bids for the same van. You get one bid for a seven passenger, go ahead and get another bid for a van big enough to pull. Because if if, you know, if you go out and you buy the two minivans and you need an eight passenger that's big enough to pull the trailer, then one minivan, one eight passenger new to me would be, cause eight passenger's not gonna be that much more than a minivan. It's all seven done. It'd be less cost to go out and get a new seven passenger, new eight passenger than it would be to get a seven passenger, eight passenger, two seven passengers and then go find something else to pull.
Or we can just keep the gold, the old golden and let him use it for.
But you said it had a lot of miles on it. We needed it to something else.
To haul. It does, but. Yeah, so it does, but you know, that's the lesser of.
Is it three quarter ton? The gold one's three quarter ton?
Steve shaking his head. No.
I don't think so.
Steve shaking his head. No.
It's just got an aftermarket hitch foot on it and.
Yeah.
It goes.
And that only three quarter ton was the one we had, we got rid of that last, I don't know, on the board when I was in BAN, the two thousand ten. We had to nurse that one to pull that concession trailer. And the next year, I don't know if we had the three quarter ton anymore.
It wasn't two thousand ten. It was in two thousand ten maybe.
In two thousand, yeah, that's what I meant. No, in two thousand ten.
Yeah, I was gonna say. It's a bit of an old, old one.
Cause that's a when we did the concession trailer that year. That's the only van that would pull it was that three quarter ton.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, maybe if you get one to eat, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't I don't think, if we're saying it's too old and has too many miles, it needs to get rid of, but we need to get, if it's gonna be replaced, it needs to be replaced with something that meets the needs of the people that have used it.
I just don't think it needs to be a van. I think it needs to, it needs to be a truck, not a van.
I think some of the things when they run, like when, like, like BAN and football, I know, like, when the coaches are together going to a game, they're discussing game time stuff as well as the van guys. They'll put half of them on the bus and one or two of them in a truck.
Now, there's some coaches on the bus, right? There are supervision on the bus, yes. Yeah, usually, usually there's two co- at least two coaches on each bus. We usually have to take two buses.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, uh, from there, there's six to eight coaches in the van as well. Cause whether there's a van full of people or a pickup truck pulling it, it's gonna cost us the same amount of money having the pickup truck or the van, whether there's people in the van or not. So the vehicle, the purpose of vehicle for pulling the trailer, it doesn't matter if it's a van or a truck. To us, the van would be more useful than the truck.
Except for both are gonna have to go if they all wanna be together in the van.
No, we need to have a, if we get two minivans, yes, you would have to have the truck pulling the trailer and the minivan taking the coaches. But if you get a van that can pull the trailer.
Sure.
Yeah. And a truck would only be nice.
So what I'm hearing you saying is that we can sell the two thousand eight gray van, two thousand nine gold van, and we would get a two vans, one to, one that would be a quarter ton that can pull.
It depends what somebody's willing to buy. Cause if somebody's gonna give fifteen hundred dollars for it, you're running until the wheels fall off. And it gets to the point where it costs more than fifteen hundred dollars to fix it than take it to the junkyard because it wasn't worth anything to begin with. Fixing it is what costs money. Breaking it doesn't cost you money.
That's great.
Yeah, you can break through money at all. I've done it a lot.
So then what's the recommendation from administration here?
I thought we were just gonna go out for bids.
Yeah.
And then once we know what.
But not awarding the bids. We're not awarding the bids to sell.
Right.
Right, but they need, we need to know what they're gonna go out and bid for.
Well, I think you bid a seven passenger and eight passenger. Cause if, we don't need to bid two seven passengers, cause we, you know, it's the same vehicle. You can buy two of them.
It is, but that's, I mean, that's what we're using. That's what the teachers use. Preference. That's the preference. I mean, it's a bigger.
Do they, do seven of them go to something?
Sometimes.
Do fourteen though?
Do you have as many?
Pardon? Do fourteen at the same time?
It might be different, different trips, different places. And there may not be seven. I'm not saying there's seven in each one that takes it places, but but they both go out. There are times where you have both of them out. We have times where we have all the vans out and people asking and there's not one available.
Maybe just price a seven, price an eight, and then we have the information to be able to make the decision once we know what these will bring.
And look at a tow package on the van?
Yeah, you want to get the van equipped to pull the trailer. And they obviously need the specs off the trailer. Cause if if you get a fifteen hundred van and you're, you know, over the 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 weight and you're not meeting DOT standards, it's not a bad, not a good day if we have a wreck for some reason.
Okay.
You're probably not gonna be able to get a van and pull that trailer with that mule and all that equipment, not missing three quarter ton.
No, I'm, that's what I'm saying. It needs to be eight passenger, three quarter ton.
Do they make a three quarter ton van?
Yeah.
They make two, but remember, that's the one that's cooler and cool to have. That's the fifteen.
Oh, we can't have that?
Yeah, we need an eight passenger, three quarter ton.
Right.
But they don't make that, you're saying?
Well, I mean, I mean, the, it might be, like I said, it's gonna have to be something that's gonna be almost special made to pull it. It's gonna have to have a transmission cooler. It's gonna have to.
I don't think that's what we're, that's what we want.
It's gonna have to have built in brakes. I mean, cause the brake controller's been put in those vans. You're gonna have to put that all in. Now with ABS and all that stuff, it's gonna be four or five thousand dollars added to that van just for ABS controller for pulling the trailer.
Is there anything wrong with bidding a seven passenger minivan and then like a crew cab truck? That would hold five?
You said, but Mr. Almiron, you said they don't take the mule anymore?
They don't take, I don't think they take the mule to the actual.
They have been over the last few years. They probably have the trailer. They'll put the mule in there as well.
Well, I know that because they told me it moved and then they're like, well, come on.
All right, so what are we going to?
I think we need to go back to the people that use it, make sure we know what we want first, before we do anything.
Yeah, well, I I talked, that's why I talked to maintenance about looking at a truck to to pull the trailer. Though to me, it made more sense to to find a used truck that was appropriate.
Well, I mean, it sounds like that they're gonna have to adapt then, cause we're not gonna go out and get a fifteen passenger van, cause we can't have one. So you're gonna find a truck that cause we can't have the fifteen passenger van. So they'll have to change the way they ride if they pull trailer. I mean, their hands are kinda tied there.
See, I think that would be where you need to talk to the football coaches and the band. Because those are the ones that are usually with the trailers, you know, to see where what's being put in there to for sure. Cause I mean, some of the van stuff, when they start getting to their shows.
A lot of the heavy stuff's in the big truck.
I know. There's a lot of stuff in the truck, but I mean, you know, they're they're smaller shows. Sometimes they're taking that van.
He's, uh, they take the van to have some stuff, some of the percussion stuff, all the uniforms and all that.
Around the truck.
Big truck.
You want to table this to get more info?
Think so.
We can.
Item eight. Press update number one oh one. This is your first reading of your press updates. There's sixteen policies in this. Eight of them are just five year reviews. And so read them, contact me if there's anything you'd like to receive. Of the other eight, there's three things that I have questions that need to be brought up. Um, the other five are really just, they're changing words. They're changing, they're updating laws and things of that nature. Uh, the three that are of specific importance is Board Policy two two three O, which is public participation. And this is where the board sets aside that time, five minutes per person, no more than twenty minutes per subject. You need to decide if five minutes and twenty minutes are still adequate or if you wanna change those amounts of time.
I don't see that one. Two, two.
It's a quick horse's back.
Oh, yeah.
Two thirds of that.
So that's one of them where we're gonna need to look at. I would recommend that we keep the amount of time that we've always had. It seems to work. But that is a a decision. Uh, Board Policy four twenty, fund balances. This one talks about the school, our school district financial profiles based on four things. One of it is fund balance to revenue ratios. Our policy currently, um, leaves out the section and that's one of the things that we can do is leave out this, uh, this extra sentence that says, uh, we'll seek to maintain a year end to revenue ratio of fifteen to twenty percent. We've never had that sentence in there. And really, it's covered in the in the, uh, school district's financial profile. But if you would like, we could have it in our policy that our year end revenue to ratio is fifteen to twenty percent. But that that seems very, um.
What would be our twenty percent?
So I I don't have a.
It's your year end revenue. So your, which your fund balance is at year end, and you you should be at least fifteen to twenty percent of what your revenue ratio is.
Well, at the year end this year, we're in negative.
Not not the updated one, we're not.
Yeah.
The the one we just got tonight, we're not. But even then, twenty percent seems steep.
Right now, our 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 policy is mute on that point. And that's what I would recommend is that we continue to be mute on that point. When when the state calculates our financial profile, they factor in our 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 fund balance to revenue ratio anyway. And so it really is. I don't think it needs to be part of board policy. However, it does have the option where you can add a sentence where you can have fifteen to twenty. And there is a provision for school districts, due to their lack of fund balance, they can pick an arbitrary percentage. But again, I would leave that mute because really the state profile covers the calculation.
There were, there were times when we were, um, when we had our general state aid prorated, that if we had a a set policy that our fund balance had to be at this level, um, we were, we were spending down our fund balances, if you remember, to to maintain programs. And so if we had that policy, we would have to adjust our policy to allow in that situation, to allow our ourselves to do that, to, you know, to do what's best for for kids at that time. And hopefully, we won't be back in that situation again. Um, that the new funding formula will take care of those things.
The third board policy, which is, uh, six three forty, talks about student testing and assessment. There's a portion in the policy that that talks about how we, um, we share the information with the state. We report it to ISBE, parents and guy and guardians. And it gives you the opportunity here to add, end the community. And so if with that, we would need to put it on our on our website or something. I don't know. But we have to share it with the community. Currently, we don't say end the community. And this is just, we can add that if you would like. So as you look through these, give me a call. Um, I would recommend that we stay with what we've always done. However, those are the three big things that are looking at the board policies as to what could be changed.
Is this posted? Or do or do this get posted after we approve them?
After you approve them.
Okay.
And we make the edits. You can go online and see what it currently reads as.
One of those, but I remember there were, the MEA was talking about wanting these posted so that they could see them.
They get in their packets or they should. Mr. Tripp, correct me if I'm wrong, but the information that you got with all the changes.
They'll have those.
He's got them.
Okay.
All right. Item number nine is registration, starter school info.
We have our class sizes in front of you. Um, the one area that I think that we need to keep a close eye on and look to in the future is another special ad at the primary buildings. We've got a teacher in there that's starting the year with, uh, twelve, twelve little ones. Um, there's aides in there, of course, but it's just having those classes smaller would be better. Um, but all in all, I'm pretty, pretty happy and satisfied with where we're at. Um, evidence-based funding would like to see those class sizes down to fifteen, based on our being a low-income school. To do that, we need to add those those classrooms to the buildings, which we will discuss later. But right there, you have your class sizes in front of you. It's informational.
So what about the other grade levels, the middle school and high school? Can we get that information too, to see how those classes are balancing out?
Sure.
Next item is the electric supply renewal approval of the contract.
And I believe you have information at your place. Uh, the reason this was a handout is, um, the rates change daily and are time sensitive. So we had to get rates today, updated rates today. Um, we currently, um, have contracted with affordable gas and electric. And, um, two years ago, when we, um, last went out for bid on our energy, um, we had, um, you know, five, five different bids, prices brought back to us. And, um, we went with a two-year option and we were paying, um, four point two four three cents, um, per per kilowatt. And that's an all-in price. So it doesn't include what Ameren, um, charges us for the lines and wires because that's there to, you know, they locked it in. We don't have any control. That's actually the, um, the the power price, which includes, um, all the information that's included in in your handout. Energy, distribution losses, transmission charge, the ancil recharge, capacity charge, um, renewable portfolio, renewable portfolio standard charge and voluntary renewable energy charge. So we we got five different price, um, points from one year to four years from AGE. Um, we also received, um, a quote from, um, the IEC. And, um, of all that, and that's also an all-in price. And they gave us three years. But the the best value, and we don't renew till January. So typically, we're looking at this more, you know, October, November, um, later. But, um, Mr. Wallace, um, from AGE, um, contacted us and said, this is a really good time. Um, prices are really low. Good time if you wanna lock in those prices. So we did reach out to IEC as well. So we so we have, um, you know, a lot of choices. And, um, unless something has changed since I got this information, consolation is, uh, on a four-year contract date. So it would run through twenty twenty-four consolation at a price of four cents. on a four-year contract date, so it would run through twenty twenty-four, consolation at a price of four cents, point zero zero four per, per kilowatt. Um, and then we wouldn't have to see this again until January of, of twenty-four. Have we seen prices lower than this in a long time, or Mr. Wallace is here if, if we have questions about that?
Bruce Wallace with portable gas and electric?
So.
Um, no, and, and your chart, I wanted to maybe, uh, direct you to the information, I believe you have a chart that looks like this. This is an Ameren chart, uh, what's called three years back. Now, what that, what that shows you in this, in the bottom line there is that prices have been dropping slowly for the last three years. Uh, you'll see over at the far right, they're starting to increase, uh, so, and that, that, this is an Ameren chart, this is Ameren's, uh, outlook over the next three years, so looking three years back, prices have slowly gone down, which has been a great market for everyone. Uh, because every time I show up and talk about contracts, it's a better price. Uh, so, but, uh, you know, there'll be a day of reckoning, and, uh, it's starting to happen now. Uh, what we're trying to be is proactive with our large clients, uh, and we've enjoyed the relationship with the, with the district here for, uh, six years now. Uh, so we wanna try to be proactive and, and make you aware that the, uh, pricing is going to go up. So even though you're not actually contract, uh, your contract isn't due until January, we want you to consider it now, uh, because of the rising market. Your, uh, school district uses about roughly three and a half million kilowatts, uh, which is a large user, uh, for all your facilities. Um, if you wait, for example, my world, when I say prices are going up, is hundreds and tenths of, 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 uh, cents. But, uh, three and a half million kilowatts adds up pretty quickly. Um, so our recommendation is to look at it sooner rather than later, and now's a good time, as you see from the trough on your chart, uh, prices are on the rise. So you also have a sh- a, a chart there as well showing your savings, uh, by whatever contract term you, you, you choose, twelve, twenty-four, thirty-six, forty-eight. Uh, and you also notice that the forty-eight month price is better than the other three, so, uh, we're, we're seeing that often right now, but that probably won't last, so you're gonna, the longer term is what we're recommending.
So if we knew, renew our contract now, it would, we could sign the contract, lock that price in, it would start in January for the next four years, if that's what the board decided to do.
That's correct.
Questions from the board?
Do we have to vote on it tonight? Right, will be different if we don't. Well, I could, I know somebody that's a superintendent at Ameren that, um, I can run this by.
Hmm.
Wanna?
Interesting.
Your recommendation is that we accept this now?
Yes.
So this, you said that three and a half million is per year?
Yes.
So it'll be eighty-four hundred dollars a year for the complaint right now?
Yeah, we have that on the chart, it's roughly, it's actually, your, your actual usage is a little less, it's about three, three point four, but I round it out.
Okay, that's what the seventy-four hundred came from, okay.
Yeah.
But you're comparing the different plans, you're comparing to what we have today.
That's correct.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Eight thousand dollars a year.
And what term are you recommending, James?
For, the four-year contract.
Alright, you've heard the recommendation from administration, I'll entertain a motion to accept that recommendation.
Second.
Second.
Mrs. Hines?
Dr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mrs. Ewaldy?
Yes.
Dr. Dorr?
No.
Mr. Ruggie?
Yes, motion carries. Item eleven is the approval of the copy paper bids for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, is item number four.
We've received, uh, sealed bids and the recommendation is to go with contract paper group as prevented, as presented for the seventeen twenty school year.
Questions from the board? Then I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation for the paper bid. And second?
Second.
Mrs. Hines?
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mrs. Ewaldy?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggie?
Yes, motion carries, we need to go into closed session.
Make the motion, we go into closed session, pursuant to section two of the Open Meetings Act Five, I've got compiled statutes one twenty slash two C, to review the appointment and employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee to determine expulitive and collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees.
And a second?
Second.
Mrs. Hines?
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mrs. Ewaldy?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggie?
Yes, motion carries, take five.